This one's gonna be slap happy because I didn't sleep because we got home so late. Okay, go. Is this thing on?
Yeah, it's red.
Hi.
We're here.
Can I have a board packet to read through while you you only have one?
Yeah, I only put in one. I'm trying to conserve paper.
That's good.
You can have that. I'll start.
Like start in the background just.
Alright, welcome to episode four of Mundaline Minute. This is season two, episode four, and we are discussing. The Mundaline Village Board Meeting held yesterday, uh, Monday, the twenty-sixth of April. Seven P M till roughly eleven thirty.
I walked in my door at eleven thirty-five to my husband just passed out cold on the couch. I was like, thanks for waiting up, sweetie.
That's amazing.
Just out cold.
I'm a little slap happy. It it was a.
Let's be honest, I'm tired. I look amass because I've chased my kid all day. We're recording this one later than we typically do, so I'll. This is what I look like all day, all the time, because I'm a mom. So just moming it up today, hair on a ponytail, no makeup, goldfish shirt on.
This is my, excuse me, this is my my work from home outfit for the day, shorts and a T-shirt and. Having to get up and and do work in the morning and then uh, do this in the afternoon before.
That's weird doing in the afternoon. Yeah, I'm gonna go to work after this too.
Never ending, never ending life. So I'm Eric Schwenk, I'm a trustee in the village of Mundaline. This is Kara Lambert.
Weird twitching. I'm Kara Lambert, also a trustee here.
And we aim to put out this podcast after meetings and in between meetings whenever there's relevant information to be shared. We strive to get out communication, to communicate with people about what's happening and.
And to make it accessible, right? Like, why? Like I say that every time. I just want to make people understand why we do things.
Um, a little disclaimer, this is my house. There's cats. If you listened to the last episode, there were cats. Fighting and knocking things over. I think they're napping. Maybe we should do this later.
Oh, the cats are exhausted from their hard mornings.
This morning when I was in meetings and they were doing the same thing. So there's kids upstairs, there's a wife upstairs, there's a bird, squeaky floors. You get the idea. Also, all of this equipment, the cameras, the microphones, the editing software, the everything that goes along with creating this. This podcast video series is mine. I pay for it out of my own pocket. It is not village sponsored. We have no taxpayer dollars. Involved in the creation of.
I'm just checking my watch because I guess I got a kid at home and was just seeing what he's doing.
Sick last week. How's it going?
I think it's allergies because we gave him some like Zertac. And the last four or five days, he's been fine, which I'm like, dude, I felt like four was too young for allergies, but. Who knows? I hear that a lot of people are having allergy issues this year. The wind maybe, it's been really dry.
It's true. It's true.
Anyways, let's uh.
So the meeting started at seven. We approved some meeting minutes for the last uh, two board meetings. That's the easy stuff. We'll get through. Then it went on to recognizing our three outgoing trustees. So trustee Robin Meyer. Excuse me, trustee Meyer, trustee Abernathy and trustee Simple are leaving the board at the end of this month.
Yeah, their last day is the thirtieth.
Yeah, their last day.
Just hydrate up.
That small little bottle of water you bring. And.
Gallon a day, man.
Oh, my goodness. And the mayor had proclamations ready, street signs. Um, I absolutely loved his joke about a pole sign.
Oh, my god, I don't even think he, uh, no one caught it until you were like, oh, man, I like, was like, whoops.
Who who knew that uh, the mayor had such a great sense of humor? I love it. So we we spent some time recognizing all the trustees um, that are leaving the board, which is awesome. And I think I added it up. It was something like forty-five or forty-six years of experience, combined experience on the the board of trustees, not not even including. Uh, trustee Simples work with the village before.
Well, yeah, both Robin and um, Ray sent on the plan commission.
Oh, that's true, right?
So.
So just just trustee experience, it was like forty-six years and and then it occurred to me that when you count up the experience of the current. We are at um, ten years.
Yikes. New ideas. It's okay.
Um, but I will say that there was quite a learning curve too.
Yeah, there is. Um, Ray almost made me cry during his.
Yeah, I mean, I was reading the Daily Herald article today about it and and um. Russell LaSalle wrote it and he was talking about how how Ray choked up a bit and.
Yeah, because it's been such a big part of his life. I, he talked about how he was holding his daughter and she was sitting in the front row. That was brutal.
Yeah, that that was a a big moment just to see the length of time that that he's been sitting in that seat or. A seat rather, but.
Yeah, yeah. So they'll be missed. I mean, they will be, but.
Their knowledge.
New board, new idea. So here we go. We're excited for May.
Next up, we had some introductions. We had um, some changing leadership in the police department over the last couple of months with our. Our prior police chief becoming a village administrator, then you know, that kind of.
The deputy chief becoming the police chief and then.
It it's worked its way down or up. Um, either way you want to look at this, that we we now have some some new leaders, so we. Were introduced to Commander Seeley and Sergeant Anderson, um, and they did the 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 badge pending ceremony. Uh, from there, we moved on to some liquor license um, and video gaming licenses.
Okay.
So.
Who's first?
First up was hits. They, well, and like we talked about, I think in one of our first episodes, these liquor licenses come before us. We we don't leave. Liquor licenses hanging out there. If they're out there and somebody wants it, um, we can be forced to provide that additional license. So you'll see us um, add and subtract licenses. At a board meeting and and that's done intentionally to to make sure that.
There's an owner assigned to every liquor license, basically.
Within within moments. Right, so we'll create it, we'll issue it right then and there, or we'll subtract it and lower the number that's available for use in the village. So last night, we took a liquor license from hits and then gave them a new classification. So they had one. Uh, an A-one license, we gave them a VG license, which gives them basically the same that an A-one does, but with video gaming.
Um, yeah, you saw me vote no on this and this is my M O. I vote no on gaming all the time. Um, and it's because I, my belief is that gaming doesn't create a family friendly facility. Doesn't portray the best image of the village. Um, so you will always see me vote no on gaming. It's just my thing and.
And I'm the same way. So I I voted for the VG liquor license. You can have the license. You can serve the alcohol. I did vote no on the next motion, which was an increase to the number of video gaming terminals within the village.
And the reason I I'm sorry, the reason I, we're both a little out of it, so you're just gonna have to be patient with us.
I don't think this is any different than the last few.
Hey, I feel like mentally I'm kind of in a cloud. Um. So I had a conversation at one point with our police chief about gaming and he explained to me that.
Prior police chief.
Our former police chief about gaming and he explained to me like the detriment that that does to a society and to a family unit and the crimes that go with it. And all this stuff. And my mind was like blown by that conversation. And so every time it comes before us in a board meeting, I like hear his voice in my ear like. Beep 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 beep. And so I always like, you gotta vote no. And you know, I I do, I understand that it's a revenue source for businesses, but we also have to make sure that. We're doing the best for the community, so that's my nationalization.
It's it's quite easy to go into a gaming establishment and lose your mortgage payment. Um, where it's much harder to go into a bar and drink that mortgage payment. You know, I I'm. I'm not sure of anybody that can drink two thousand dollars worth of alcohol in a night.
That's not a challenge.
That's not a challenge. Thank you for clarifying that. But I can definitely tell you that I've seen people blow two thousand dollars in in gambling in a single night. So that that concerns me. That's that's a a huge, huge loss. So I I continue to vote no on additional video gaming terminals. Um, a couple more liquor licenses. We decreased liquor licenses for Tony Cannoli.
No more Lemoncello.
No more Lemoncello or um, De Carlo Liquors. So these are both at the request of the business. Next, we adopted a retirement savings plan for non-union and management employees within the village. So now they're saving one percent of their salary towards a retirement health savings plan. That was easy enough.
Super easy enough.
Um, we recessed into some public hearings, well, a public hearing to talk about, um, it's got a funny name of Habdab.
Do you know why it's Habdab?
It's initials.
Yeah, I think it's all of his kids' names.
Yeah, it's kids' initials, I think. He he mentioned it at a meeting, what, two years ago or something?
But also, it's really fun to say.
It is fun to say Habdab. And Habdab is the property office of Winchester, uh, with the mountain of dirt. And what do what do we call it?
Mount Theo.
Mount Theo.
So my son's name is Theo and every time we go by it, he's like, mom, you know, he's four. Mom, what is that? And I'm like. I never know how to explain it to a four-year-old, so I've just started calling it Mount Theo. So we'll see if it sticks. Mount Theo, you guys.
So Mount Theo is where uh, companies come and and drop off clean fill dirt.
Yeah, can we highlight that, that it is EPA certified clean fill? So there's nothing gross going up there.
So the the big dig project that that's happened in my backyard here in Mundaline, where we've had to re- remove a lot of dirt to put in ginormous pipes underground. For the flooding uh, mitigation. A lot of that dirt went went out there, if not all of it, went to that that location. And just from from other areas around, that location is where trucking companies bring clean fill to.
Do you want us to talk about now or later what this is, what the plan is with this?
So yeah, the 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 end plan is to create um, a ginormous mountain of dirt packed to eighty-five percent. And then that land will be donated to the village if they wa- wish to accept it. They don't, they're not required to to take title on it. Um, and if not, then it can go to an another organization or another public entity. There was one in Grays Lake.
There is one in Grays Lake. It's Allegheny Park. It's on Allegheny. Um, it's. A playground and then bo- um, baseball fields. And I think there's like a soccer field up there. There's like a ton of recreation and stuff up there, so. Um, the goal is it could look like that or it could look like something else.
Be turned into anything else, right? It is going to take some time. So the the amount of land that's being annexed in is some fifty-something acres.
Yeah, there's some complications with, you know, without getting like too technical here because I'll get lost in the weeds very fast. There are some technicalities where we have to, where Grays Lake would have to disconnect some land and then it could get. Annexed into the into Mundaline and you need to make sure that all your parcels are touching to annex everything incorrectly, so. There is a bit of like moving minutia pieces and and that's why you're seeing it done in piecemeal because. Grays Lake has to allow and then we have to accept, so it comes in like various stages. Um, but the total project is gonna be fifty-one acres and and as we start to move. Oh, boy, directions. Oh, boy, this is northwest.
We've had this conversation before about Kara's directional challenge.
Thank God my car has GPS. As you move that way, he'll be able to hopefully in the future add an access point off of Peterson Road. And then, you know, you're not accessing, there he's not accessing his property off of Winchester. So by allowing this to further expand north and west. You're hopefully mitig- mitigating some of the noise, trucks, dirt that the residents in Cambridge are experiencing. Um, but our community development person brought up a good point, you know, if if this was gonna be a subdivision, if you were gonna build a brand new subdivision. You would have to move just as much dirt and you would have this massive mountain until the subdivision was developed. So. Although I hear the residents that it's not ideal for them to hear this, if any development were to go there, you'd experience the same. Results of what you're experiencing now. So it's like, it's like growing pains, basically.
It is, and that that Habdab is working with the village and the county to ensure that they're. They're keeping up with the terms of the agreement to make sure that the trucks are cleaned and that they clean the road when things get muddy and dirty. That they're out there with a street sweeper and ensuring that it's not just a a dirty mess.
But, you know, the mayor said last night, if you guys hear anything, let us know, like.
Absolutely.
Anyways, okay, so we've covered the public hearing, so we had to um, go into public hearing to discuss annexation's formality of. An annexation agreement.
Correct. And if anybody knows, please leave it in the comments. I don't know how to say the word and I hear it both ways. Is it annex or?
Or next.
Annex.
I don't know.
I don't know either. Uh, so let me know, because.
I always say annexed, but. You already hear both ways anyways.
So next up was trustee reports. We moved into community and economic development and. We brought up a motion from later on, and this was done intentionally here. So the economic development incentive. Including tax increment financing guidelines. That is a big fancy name for a TIF policy or rather TIF guidelines, not a policy, just guidelines. And this is a a document that helps the the village, community development group and the board. Um, evaluate new projects that come into the village within a TIF district.
And well, TIF projects, because we learn just because you don't build within a TIF that you get a TIF, that it's a TIF project.
Right, not all projects in a TIF are TIF projects.
Complicated stuff.
Although they generate TIF.
They generate TIF, but they don't have TIF incentive behind them.
They don't.
Now try to try to follow that.
Right, exactly. So we moved that up. There was number twelve on the agenda. We moved that up to number one. And and passed that. Um, and since that. Tax increment financing guidelines was in place, then we started voting on the new TIF, TIF number four. Which is now our third TIF in the village.
I think we'll just start the trend of calling it the Oak Creek TIF.
Oak Creek TIF. So the next couple of motions were were just that, the first three of the of the agenda after number twelve. So number twelve, back to number one. And we approved the creation and the ordinances designating TIF number four.
And Eric and I are on this negotiating team, so.
Yeah, we are.
Newly on it.
Newly on it.
Discussing with the developer, trying to get something cool down there that's not, you know, just run-of-the-mill, something innovative, so keep trying.
Yeah, if you're a developer, come talk to us.
Come talk to us.
We're ready. Um, we approved some variations for parking for Rise Dispensary.
Yeah, what's going on with that? What do we do there?
They're do- they're doing some construction to to generate, uh, to create rather a drive-through facility. And in doing so, they are in need of losing some parking spaces. They have struggled with parking down there for quite some time.
So by ordinance, we have a certain number of parking spots that they have to have.
Eighty-six.
They cannot do that while they're in construction, so this will be temporary, reducing them to like in the.
Fifty-nine.
Yeah, fifty-nine, so again, not permanent. So I saw no, I mean, yeah, no issue.
Correct. Um, the next two were variations uh, regarding. Sorry, uh, for a pavilion and the maximum amount of floor area.
This is for the house, right?
This is for a home.
I probably need to just move in there. Did you see the plans?
They they're gorgeous, yeah.
They're amazing.
So so these people are creating a outdoor space for entertaining.
Outdoor oasis, my gosh, it looks amazing.
Kitchen and their plans were larger than the footprint that was allowed by ordinance. They've gone through the planning and zoning process and they came before us and we granted that that variation. Next up was big applications. So the the business incentive grant allows businesses to receive up to fifty percent. Of costs associated with outside. Anything to in to to better your business.
Right, yeah.
And we had a couple of those, one for a sign, uh, two for a sign?
Yeah, two for a sign.
Two signs and then there was O-Salon. There was two associated with that.
Yeah, so O-Salon is that expanding into eighty-three, under eighty-three there? Is that what's going on? Cool. I mean, that's good, that's good. I mean, I'm okay with that. So O-Salon looks like they're having tentative plans to um, go into where the Snap Fitness used to be.
Correct, and uh, they got this in at the, right at the end of the fiscal year, which was awesome.
Yeah, exactly. I'm excited for them. That's great.
Um, we skipped over number twelve because we already took care of that and number thirteen was a discussion regarding one sixty-nine North Seymour Avenue. Uh, that is the old fire station at the corner of Division and Seymour. And we, the village has been approached by a developer who would like to build a a brewt- brewtap, brewhouse.
Brew house? I don't know. I don't drink beer.
A brute, a beer place.
Where you get beer, but they're also gonna have food.
Right across from the gas station. I'm sorry, from the fires, uh, police station. Yes, they're building a. I haven't been drinking, but they're building a uh, a brewery. That's the word I was looking for.
Yeah, but it's gonna have food too, so it's not just a brewery. I don't know. Told you, it was a long night.
So a brewery and um. By law, we had to seek alternate proposals just because somebody comes to us and says, hey, I would like that public land. We can't just go, okay, well then let's sell it. We have to actually advertise that that land is available.
So it was in the newspaper on Friday?
And I didn't write down the dates, uh, but Amanda Orinchuck from Community Development did mention that that. All of these dates were circulated. She said that the deadline was Friday.
Friday and no one else had.
Nobody had sought um, any alternative proposals for that.
I feel like this is such a cool spot for a restaurant.
Oh, my gosh, I love the garage doors.
I love it. So cool. Um, my friend and I had joked around about, he's like a big beer guy. Zach, are you listening? Um, we had joked about um, opening up a be- uh, a brewery there too, and we were like looking into like how. The investment and all sorts of things and it, that's such a, it's just such a cool spot for that. So I'm excited for that.
Yeah, it's a good spot, especially on the fourth of the fireworks.
Oh, man.
Alright, you can take the next one, GMX Mundaline Subdivision.
Nah, I don't know if I'll take that. Uh, I don't know. So I will take this.
See the video, episode two.
Yes, watch our episode two video. We covered what a plat of subdivision is. Um, there was a lot of stuff that went on last night and we're gonna stay away from that because I really don't want to get like in the weeds of what happened. Ultimately, Eric and I both chose to take the advice of our village attorney and do the what was legally correct. Um, and that was to vote on this, oh, I just hit the microphone, sorry, to vote on this um, as. A singular entity of a plat of subdivision and that's what this is. And in my mind, I had to get rid of everything else that that. Wasn't pertinent to this motion and this motion alone was on GMX wanting to combine the plats of their property. The property owners that own it now signed off on it. We did not, the cal- um, our attorney used the term, we did not have discretion. This was a technicality vote. So this wasn't something that was a discretionary vote to us.
Correct, and and one of the things that stood out to me last night was that not only was the village's council. We had uh, an attorney present, one on the phone, and then GMX's counsel was present and they agreed. And 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 Kara and I were both kind of.
Like, find me another example where you have three attorneys in a room on opposite sides that reach the same conclusion.
Right, that's kind of big. That speaks, um, and and I'm gonna touch on one of the issues that that was addressed last night and.
Go for it.
There, we heard a lot during public commentary about the municipal code and that the this. Was being treated improperly and that anybody who comes before the planning and zoning, what we were told. Is that anybody that comes in front of the.
You were told by public commentary.
By public commentary, that anybody who comes in front of planning and zoning, a commission aboard and who is denied. Or withdraws after being denied, like if they go to planning and zoning are denied withdrawal before coming to the board, that they still can't. Come back for a year. And we spent a lot of time talking about that last night and. You can hear the bird up there. It's going off.
Yeah, I hear that.
Yeah. So when discussing this last night, we we talked to council publicly in the meeting. And one of the questions I asked was about this, you know, she had stated about this, this is a zoning ordinance. And that was being quoted. So in further discussions, we found out that yes, this this does apply for zoning. But what they're asking for, this plat of consolidation is not a zoning issue. It's a subdivision issue. And in our municipal code. Title twenty is where the zoning ordinances are and what that process is to get variations and go through the planning and zoning process.
I pulled up the state code last night and the state code code has it separated. Similar to our municipal code where the zoning process is a different clause than than the subdivision. So the state and the municipal codes align to reflect that.
Correct. In our municipal code, it's section nineteen, or I'm sorry, title nineteen. And there's individual sections when you go through that. So. We were being told in public commentary that the the rules that we should follow are in are in title twenty. We're being told by legal counsel that it's title nineteen. And anything in title nineteen that that I read through last night. Had no timeframes about how soon an item can be brought back before planning and zoning or before the village board. And that alone. Um, it gave me pause when when it was first brought to us. But when I started looking into it, I didn't see that there was the issue that was being brought to me. Of this is being rushed through the process because um, they had been denied and didn't wait the year. That 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 actually just didn't apply in the situation. So ultimately, I I voted in favor. The. The end use has not been defined.
And it and and it has, this vote has nothing to do with the end use.
Correct. This this allows them to combine, what, thirty lots?
Thirty, there, well, there's nine on one seventy-six alone, so.
Maybe it was only seventeen or eighteen lots.
I mean, a lot.
That are being combined into one. A lot of lots are being combined combined into one lot. What will be built on that lot has yet to be determined.
And Eric will link to the other podcasts that we kind of talk about this in more, but like. End use wasn't defined. We didn't vote on variances. We didn't vote on anything. All we were doing is voting on a plat of subdivision. So. I just, last night was a lot.
Correct.
For a plat consolidation, so let's move on.
Alright, moving on, residential design guidelines. I was on this for two years.
This is your baby.
And it came to me.
Being born last night.
It was. It was a big, we actually had a lot of wrap-up work um, from the last two years. And this is one of them, and this was, this was actually something that I inherited from um, trustee Rikus. And this was was his baby too. And and this was an interesting one, and let me tell you, very educational to learn about design.
I feel like as a Realtor, this kind of like came in handy to know all this stuff.
It did. It definitely is is good to know and it's, it it kind of fit in with some of the books that I was reading about. Community development and about, yeah, urban planning and the best use of land and how to. How to build it out and not end up with the ginormous, ginormous cul-de-sac subdivisions of the nineties. And, sorry, I lived in them too.
I live in one of those.
Next up is Habdab. So as we talked about, Habdab is the the Dirtfield Project out on Winchester. Yep, we talked about it. So since we did the hearings, now we have to bring it back and handle the the motions related to the petition. So next up was the Sheldon Wood Subdivision. Uh, this is the one, the Polty Development out by Target.
I love these houses. They're gorgeous. Russ, get ready because we're moving, because they said they would be up in spring of twenty-two. Rust and Arlo, we are moving, spring of twenty-two, twenty-two. Got it?
Alright, now that that's done, I don't think we need to talk about anything else.
These houses are gonna be beautiful.
No, so there there was quite a discussion between um, two attorneys. We actually jokingly counted up. The number of attorneys in the boardroom last night.
So many lawyers in the boardroom last night.
Was, I think, ten. Um, so we had a couple of attorneys from either side of Polty and Ivanhoe Golf Club. Were, they they were there to discuss netting between the.
Houses in the driving range.
Yeah, the houses in the driving range.
This is not a really our thing.
I'm not getting involved in my thoughts on that process. They are continuing to talk. Polty has offered seven hundred and four thousand dollars to help pay for the netting.
But this is a private issue thing. It really should not.
It's between them and I would like them to figure this one out.
So anyways, we voted on their final plat of subdivision. Again, not a very big thing because we had already voted on the preliminary plat in December. This was just finalizing it up and a plat does not even like give you that many, it doesn't give you like what the houses look like or anything like that. It just is like. I feel like it's kind of like almost like a blueprint, you know, of the land, yeah. Super excited though that this is like full steam ahead. Ray asked for like a timeline and Polty gave it to him and. Grand opening in the fall. They're gonna put some models up and they think that there will be people moving in spring of twenty-twenty-two.
Russ.
Russ.
Next was Public Works Committee and we discussed, let's see, the first one up was the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Construction Engineering Service Agreement for Banbury. So this is the um, this is just the oversight, right? For the construction ob- observation, yep. So the the money to pay the company for Gualt Hamilton to oversee the project. For the road resurfacing. Yep. Next, we did a couple of change motions. I won't go through those individually. But we're still finishing up the Public Works and Engineering Facility and that was four motions. And that finished off the Public Works Committee. Next up was finance and that's all me, so I will take over that. I guess.
Yes, you're a world man.
Um, finance the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget, so we passed the motion to adopt the budget. Which is fifty-seven million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. And that includes not only the. Annual capital improvement budget, but also the five-year, uh, I'm sorry, the fiscal year twenty-two annual budget and the five-year capital improvement budget. I also see that Kara has her hand up, so I'm gonna try to keep talking about the fiscal budget for as long as I possibly can. The fiscal budget has. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was about to give you kudos.
Oh, thanks.
I think you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is down nine percent from last year.
Yes. Yes, a lot of that though is because of the stormwater project.
Come on, it's a good thing.
And and I'm not gonna take credit for any of it because I do chair the committee, but it's our awesome staff that did the work.
Fair, fair, but I thought that was good to highlight, like, we're down nine percent in terms of expenditures, so.
I am thrilled that we ended the last year with a million dollar surplus and that
What is it called, like tightening up your bud- what is it, tighten up your boot strap? No, what is the term?
I I don't know.
Buck buckle tightening?
Keep going.
I've got nothing. What is it called when you're more?
I think, I'm just gonna go with fiscally responsible.
I know, but there's like a colloquialism for it. Is that a word colloquialism?
It is, you got you got that one, but you couldn't get the term?
What is it called? Not pull them up by your bootstraps.
Tighten the belt?
Yes, thank you.
All that, okay.
Okay, I have had two kids all day today. I am, this is late, my brain is, I gotta go to work after this.
Oh, boy. Uh, so we we passed the budget, the budget is approved for the next fiscal year and it is balanced. The next item was amending the rates for water service and sanitary sewer, so this this motion told us absolutely nothing, so we I actually kind of spoke on it just briefly to clarify, so what this does.
Super misleading, because if you just read the motion, it looks like we're messing with people's rates.
Right.
Which at last week's meeting, we said we weren't doing.
And we are. We're taking away the fifty dollar deposit.
Right.
And if you've paid the fifty dollar deposit, obviously you get that money back if you move out of Mundaline, which you should not do. But if you do, you'll get that fifty dollars back, but new residents now don't have to to pay that. Uh, the next two items were our our fiscal bu- business that we handle every, trying to think of a word to say there, but the fiscal business that we handle at every board meeting, the AT&T separated bills. For now, yeah.
Yeah, it's crazy.
So AT&T bills was one thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-one cents. And the full governing body bill approval was one million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. And, um, every item that we pay, the village pays, is in this disbursement pending report for that, um, period.
Which is on our website, you can always read it.
Website, yep, it's either in the board packet or it's on the finance page. Um, it's in both places and you can review all of those items, every single one of them. Next up was public safety, uh, there was no motions.
No, um, uh, police, Amazing Mundaline is this weekend, it's a much smaller thing, the community is
You go on.
I am, it's my favorite, okay, so there are very little perks, if any, to being a trustee, right? You get a lot of like yelling and people like, you did the wrong thing at you, right? But the few things that I like love, love, love about being a trustee, besides like, you know, serving the community, minor details. But Amazing Mundaline, probably one of my favorite events, um, Boobash.
Community Days.
The parade, my favorite. But anyways, back to Amazing Mundaline, it's this weekend, um, I'm going, Theo will be, this is his first time helping me. So if you see a kid screaming and me just ignoring them, that's my kid, I'm, he lives a good life, don't worry about him.
Uh, I'm hoping to bring Nick, depending on his track meet schedule, um, he will also be the fifteen-year-old that's throwing the fit.
Oh, good, I'm glad they don't change, four to fifteen, okay, good.
That's about the same.
Great.
There was nothing else, uh, fire?
Fire didn't have anything. There was a fire yesterday in town, um, they posted on their Facebook page about it. Uh, no one was injured, no that, no people, no animals, nothing, they were able to get out, so.
It's my understanding, not only was there a fire in Mundaline at that time, there was multiple fires in the surrounding area at the same time. Yeah, so there was a lot, a lot of fire activity.
Well, I think the dry weather and the wind that we have is crazy, so anyways, we digress.
Building committee, there was, uh, no motions, no report and, uh, Europe, transportation and infrastructure committee, go.
So there was a motion on it to talk about the multi-use path, which is the path along one seventy-six, um, the motion was for like a million, one point three, one point one, so the motion was allowing us to issue the contract for one point one million dollars, however, we are only spending
Eight seventy-five?
Eight seventy-five and the rest is IDOT's responsibility or the state is handling, so, um, that was, you know, the only complexity with that.
And then there was the twenty-twenty street and improvement construction change order.
Yes, which I even forgot that I did that last night.
Yeah, it was late.
It was really late, and actually at the end of this, I just like sat there cuz I was like, oh, I'm done, and the mayor was like, trustee Lambert, do you have anything else? Tr- trustee Lambert, and I was like Oh, yeah, I'm still here. Nope, that's all I got tonight, so.
Moving on with the agenda, other reports, there were none, under the omnibus vote items, we, um, we granted the twenty-five thousand dollar request to Mundaline Community Connection, which we've we've done the last few years.
And they really need it this year, their fundraiser, their big fundraiser, the Craft Beer Festival got canceled for the year, so I am hoping, hoping, hoping we have other events for the summer.
Correct. Um, under the village administrator report, I have my notes around here somewhere.
He gave an update on the outdoor dining program which ends this week, oh no, the outdoor dining will continue into the next fiscal year.
Sixteen businesses, fourteen thousand.
Yes.
And then the utility.
Was bigger, was a bigger thirty, thirty businesses.
Sixteen thousand?
Uh, it was a larger number, but a lot of businesses had utilized the utility assistance grant.
But less than allotted.
Yes.
By far less.
And so the dining program will continue into fiscal year twenty-two, um, the utility grant program will expire at the end of the year.
After that, we, um, there was no report from the village attorney, nothing from the village clerk, and we recessed into executive session, also known as the double secret squirrel session. And, uh, yeah, you never heard that one?
No.
Oh, yeah. Um, to discuss land acquisition or sale of property and to discuss, um,
Minutes.
Minutes from executive session. Um, we came out of that.
No action.
We weren't there that long, uh, no action.
And then we went home.
Yeah, we adjourned the village board meeting and and we scurried.
Yeah, it was eleven-thirty. It was way past my bedtime.
Yeah, it was late, it was a late night. Anything else you wanna add?
No.
No?
No, I got nothing. We'll see you guys next.
No, I got a question for you.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy, I saw this on one of the Mundaline Facebook groups. Favorite Mundaline area dessert, go. I already know your answer.
What's it gonna be?
I'm writing down, hold on, I don't have a pen.
What's yours? You don't know mine. I bet you don't know mine.
No?
No, what's yours?
I love the cinnamon rolls at Area Coffee.
The gluten-free ones?
Those are good, but I like the other ones. Um, extra gluten.
Extra gluten.
Yeah, no, those are, those are amazing, uh, honorable mentions, Carina's and Lalo's. Their donuts are, but that's not really dessert, that's a breakfast item, come on.
Okay, my favorite dessert in Mundaline, the cheesecake from Taste of Paris.
Hmm, okay. I'm I'm gonna butcher it, I don't know how to say it, the Milli Philly, filet, Milli, it's the, it's the cream with the puff pastry. Taste of Paris does it right, oh, my gosh.
Taste of Paris cheesecake, so when I was pregnant during COVID last year, as as we're in lockdown, my Mother's Day present, Ru- Russ, special ordered a chocolate chip cheesecake from them. Oh, it was so good. Honorable mention, of course, the Dinaro family, which is my husband's name. Uh, the Lambert Dinaro family, I guess we're a split name, uh, big fans of Tony Cannoli, so Theo.
That's where I thought you were going.
Well, Theo goes to Tony Cannoli every Friday and he loves Tony, so.
Who doesn't?
But he really just loves Tony and like our gender reveal for our baby was a cannoli, I mean, we love Tony Cannoli, but the cheesecake from Taste of Paris, so.
I think I'm gonna change my answer after this conversation.
To what?
The tiramisu. Oh, my gosh, Loretta's.
Oh, is it good? Have you ever had Loretta's donuts?
No, I see them on the website and on Facebook, but I I.
They're good, they'll change your mind. They are so good, they're chocolate donuts.
Tiramisu's.
Okay, now I'm hungry.
Yeah, right?
Okay, and no one's listening at this point.
They should.
Russ is at the gym, lift it up, man.
Right, if you're still working out.
You still working out?
Good on you.
My husband listens to this while he works out, if anyone's still listening, so.
Is that how he gets all of his Mundaline news? You you won't talk to him about it? That's awesome.
All right.
Until next time.
Have a good week, you guys. Enjoy the weather.
Enjoy the nice weather and we'll see you in the next episode.